I'm just teasing you.
No, serious?
I know, I know.
Good afternoon. We will call the work session to order. It's Monday, July 3rd, 5:15. So, first item is public comment. We don't have anyone here to speak unless you guys want to? You're good? All right. We'll move on to agenda item number two, which is survey results. Judy, are you presenting those?
As the council directed, we did, my office contacted each of the off-sale liquor license holders that we have in the city of Wilmer. We have five that are licensed for off-sale, and then we also checked with the convention and visitors bureau. And you were all given the replies by each of the establishments as to their opinion if they wanted the council to take formal action to not allow any off-sale in the city of Wilmer. And as you can see by the survey, you know, several will be open. They're the corporate ones. We have one that is not going to be open, and then one independent that is going to be open just to stay competitive with the others. So it's up to the council to decide if you want to pursue changing the ordinance that would restrict all off-sales for Sunday in the city of Wilmer, or just leave it as be, as the state law is, and each establishment can make up their own decision.
Okay. All right, we have received the information from the survey. Does anyone have any other questions? Kay?
I was just gonna say thank you for doing that legwork and getting those calls placed, and I know that I was the one who had asked us to do that. In the meantime, I also spoke with a number of our constituents, and it was very interesting, the different comments that I got from folks, but the most common, and probably three to one, that I received from our constituents was they did not think that we should have an ordinance to regulate this and should allow the state to, you know, have that final say, so.
All right. Anyone else have a comment? Otherwise, I think we can just receive this information. If there's no one that wants any further, we'll just accept the information. Is that all right? Hearing none. We will move on to the next item, which is the... I've got a wrong agenda item here, sorry. Public Works Department update for the year 2017.
So we're gonna have to wait here a little bit because the computer's updating in the back, so you don't have any... You'll have to take my word for it, 'cause I'm... You can't see it up there yet.
A trust me?
A trust me. So let me get to it here. And I intended on, as soon as he's, gives me the nod back here, I'll... Well, we'll pull it up on the big screen for you.
Okay.
So what I've done, I've pulled together, and I don't know that I can kill an hour and a half, but I will fill some time here. What I've done is pulled together an annual report of sorts, but the, was for calendar year 2016. And so with that, I will, as, while I go through it, I'll update you on some current happenings at the Public Works as we go through on these same categories. And at the same time, just stop me in the middle, so we don't have to wait till the end if you've got questions or concerns or comments on the given different categories that we go through here. And again, I apologize, and as soon as we get it up on the big screen, we can follow along there as well, 'cause I didn't include the 22-page report in your agenda either, so. It's more than, more than willing to share that with you in the office if you wanna, if you wanna come look at it sometime, or I can send the PowerPoint to you as well. So for 2016, the, the report starts out with the personnel. We've got, we had in 2016, 21 total employees for Public Works. That includes me, of course, as the director, Scott Lettabore as the superintendent, Gary Manzer as the working foreman. It does not count, or did not count, Kelsey is the clerical, that she does a lot of, a significant amount of work for the Public Works. And that includes two mechanics, one of which has retired since, since, at the end of 2016, and one of the maintenance workers is also retired in February of 2016. That, oh, and of course Scott Lettabore also retired at the end of 2016. So we've got all new crew out there, or a lot of new, a quarter of the new crew out there. We hired four new individuals. All four have done absolutely wonderful. I've heard nothing but good things about them. And it's not, the, they greatly increase or add to the vast knowledge that is out there and capabilities of the Public Works crew. So in the meantime, when all this was going on, we, of course, promoted Gary, excuse me, promoted Gary Manzer to superintendent, and then promoted, after an internal hiring process, we promoted Justin DeLeo as the working foreman, which opened it up, opened up the third and fourth position for the, for the operators, because one of the other maintenance workers actually wanted one of the mechanic's positions. And so we're down to full staff. It's, I don't know if it's fortunate or unfortunate that it's the only one of my divisions that is at full staff currently, so that's, that's, that's an exciting time for them at this point, anyway, so.
So just to clarify?
Yes, ma'am.
So you were, you were down three that retired?
Correct.
You hired four?
Correct.
So now you're at 22.
Now we're at 22.
Just checking my math.
That math is great. And, and the fourth one, the reason we filled three with four was, if you recall, the end of last year, allowing to hire an additional person to get back to standards from, from years ago, the numbers. The council was, allowed me to fill mid-year, so that's where we're at now with that, with that fourth person. The next page of the report, and again, you just have to, back to the trust me thing. So next page of the report is precipitation and snowfall totals. And so we've got them going back to '09 for the rain and '07 for the snow, and a couple little anomalies here with last year's rainfall in, in August. That was back through '09, the largest single month total, the month of August was. And, but believe it or not, on a yearly total, we were an inch and a half shy of the total in 2010. So kind of strange things going on there, but we were at a total of almost 39 inches of rain last year. And over the course of an eight-year average, the average is 30 and a half inches. So we were nine inches above the, the average on an eight-year running total. Snowfall, as far as that goes, again, January to December, snowfall, so that makes things a little interesting since it's not seasonal. Excuse me, 10-year average is 46 and a half inches, so almost four feet of snow. Last year, we were at 34 inches, and so we're significantly lower than, than the average. And that's back to '07, as far as where that average, that's a 10-year average on that one, so. Any questions on rain or snow, or any quizzing about a month or year that you're thinking was successive high or low that I can answer?
Is there a pattern?
No. Rainfall, for instance, going from '09 to present, we were 31 inches, then 41, then 30, then 23, then another 23, then 32, so it, no pattern to speak of. Obviously, your biggest months are, looks like June and August. I didn't think, the one that surprised me was the August one, but, you know, we had nine and a three-quarters, almost 10 inches of rain in August last year. This is according to this chart. And then, as we know, that was all in one rainstorm, or virtually all in one rainstorm. But there's another year that had seven, another year that had nine and a half, so August is a pretty good big month, and, and again, June is, as most of you would probably expect. Snowfall's much the same. The high was almost 60 inches in 2010. And then this year, this last year was about third from the bottom in those 10 years, and so it's just kind of, kind of all over the place. So now seasonal, seasonal snowfall is different. Of course, that goes from about November to March, or whatever, you know, spans a year. In fact, I've got it listed, October through April. A 10-year average of October through April seasonal snowfall is, is 44 and a half, almost, almost 44 and a half inches. We, as far as the Public Works crew goes, the city of Wilmer, streets, paths, sidewalks, parking lots, were divided into 12 different routes. And each route has one or two staff member and equipment that's assigned to those routes. And there's about 135, as you know, miles of streets, 12 parking lots, and about 16 miles of paths and sidewalks that we, that we maintain. On an average snowfall, it takes about six hours to get through the entire city one time. And in 2016, we spent about 2,800 hours of snow-related removal or duties to remove that. And again, when I say 16, that's October through, of 15 through April of 16.
So question on that?
Yeah.
Seems like the snow always manages to come on the weekend.
Right.
So what do you do to regulate the overtime and for when they have to come in and do Saturday and Sunday work?
Yep. So what's happened in the past, I, for the most part, left it up to Scott as a superintendent of those guys and deals with them daily. But what happens, and I assume Gary will do much the same, is most of it's on a volunteer basis at first. We don't have any on-call, like they have at wastewater. That's a different situation. But a lot of it's on a volunteer basis, and Scott would go down through the list and probably start at a different person each time, so that it's not calling the same person every time, 'cause that causes hard feelings and, or, you know, favoritism or things of that nature, so. Big snowstorms, everybody's in. If you're not on vacation, everybody's in, vacation or sick. And so it's, it's pretty much kind of a call as you go, and most people are, all the guys out there are great. Most of them will say, "Yeah, I'll come in," and, I mean, it, it means overtime for them, of course, but, but you're still out on the roads instead of home with your family, so it's mostly on a volunteer basis.
Okay. So you don't, they don't get, they don't take off other days during the Monday through Friday week to compensate if they were over the weekend?
You know, we haven't done that. The, their, the employment agreement, the contracts allow for comp time or overtime pay. And then the comp time, of course, would, would equate out to time off that would, that would, that would match that. But most of them don't. We still need to be here, you know, 40 hours a week, and so, and so that's typically an overtime. Now, one caveat to that, if we call what, what we call a snow emergency, where we come in overnight and remove all the snow downtown, then those guys that come in and do that will have that day off to counter that, that eight hours, 'cause they'll start at midnight or 10 o'clock at night and go till about 5 o'clock in the morning, so.
Okay.
So that brings us into street maintenance. In 2016, the street crews patched streets for 25 days. Total of 1,900 man-hours to patch, for the patching. It began, began the first day that the hot mix was available, which was May 12th of 16. And the last day was November 11th of 16, so we had a long season there that we could, we could get to that. We patch everything from frost boils, utility cuts, chuck holes. Utility, the utility cuts come from sewer repairs and water main repairs, as you know, storm and sanitary sewer. We repaired, Public Works staff repaired 11 water main cuts last year, and that was from the, from the winter of 15, 16. So that was for water main breaks that seemed to happen on the weekend's end when it's, you know, 20 below. So that's, that's when the water lines decided to break. Public Works Department purchased almost 395 tons of asphalt last year. The average cost was $72 a ton. The total cost for the year was approximately, was just under $28,500 just for asphalt last year for the, for the work that we do. Seal coating and crack sealing is separate, and we contract that out. And the city spends, excuse me, city spends approximately $70,000 a year on, on crack seal and seal coat. We, last year, we coated, seal-coated 3,900 feet, which is about three-quarters of a mile, and then we crack sealed just over three miles of city streets. Tree trimming and tree removal. Questions on streets yet, or no? Yes?
Sean, if I may, I know it falls into 2017, but with all the water that we had in August, did, do we have more storm water, storm mains breaking this year because of the additional pressure that was put on our system last year, or not?
You know, I don't know that we can definitely attribute it to that. We do have, we've got three or four storm lines and catch basins that need to be repaired currently. I'd have to look at the numbers and see if they correlate at all with the, with the, with the volume of water, or the amount of water we got. But I don't think so. I mean, yeah, if you get, what happens is you get, you get a, a hole or a little bit of a, one, you know, and some of the old catch basins are brick lined, and so one brick gets out or whatever, the water just slowly erodes away around it, and then things start, start sloughing off and can settle that street, so. I wouldn't put a correlation on it yet, but I could put numbers together and see, but I don't, I don't, I don't think that's the case.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Sean?
Yes?
What causes the, all the erosion below these catch basins? Some of them are relatively new within the last six, seven years. They drop, and then the tire falls down, and there's a hole alongside of it. What causes that, and is it poor workmanship, or?
You know, I don't know that I would go there. Yeah, it's possible. You know, anytime you get water around the outside of it, as you know, it, it can cause that and continue to eat away at that. You know, maybe there's a joint missing, or maybe there's something that's, that's unbeknownst to anybody until it surfaces on that, on that, on the road. Sometimes if you, if the bedding is not quite right, and whether that's the design bedding or what was actually put in there, you know, around the pipe itself, you can kind of get some moisture in there with high groundwater and kind of wash away some of the fines and let that stuff settle a little bit. Some of it's just the frost movement under the streets, you know, or, or in the catch basins, or in the leads to the catch basins. You know, you're, anytime you disturb that soil, it's going, and put different material in there, it's gonna affect each material differently, and so. I haven't been able to, we haven't been able to point fingers to anything, any one particular item on different... Most of them are age. Most of them are age-related, you know, the, in this, in this report that I'm looking at right here that you guys can't see, I've got a great picture of a bunch of bricks from an old catch basin that fell in. You know, it's just age, you know, and the, the precast ones are probably better as far as that goes, 'cause they're solid concrete instead.
On 22nd and 23rd Avenue out where I live, they've been repaired once already, and they're failing again.
Okay.
Falling in. I think I sent you a picture of a couple of them.
Okay.
Take pictures when I walk out there, but it, it seems to me that, are they putting rings around them to bring them up to grade, and then the rings fail, or?
You know, it, it depends on each, each, each site is specific. You know, some of them can get away with rings, some of them have to be a complete replacement. And each one is truly different as far as what, what needs to be done. What we're trying on a couple of them this time, or this, this go-around is a, is a round, like the top of a manhole. And we're gonna try that process and see if that works a little bit better as far as, far as setting it. You can get a, you get a different, different catch basin grate on top of that that can rotate to the curb backing, and... So we're trying some different things, try to, try to minimize some of that, and, yeah, sometimes it just, just things, they just, just happen. But we'll go take a look at them again and see if it's something that we did, or...
And related to streets, how, where are we in potholes as far as patching and fixing them? Are we catching up, or are we behind, or?
No, no, we're catching up. I know when we started, I think the Public Works crew gave me, I can't remember if it was 11 or 13 pages of potholes on a, on, in a list format, so I don't know which page we're on right now. But, yeah, we're, we're continuing to do that, and, yeah, definitely catching up with it.
Okay, thank you.
Tree trimming, tree removal, another big part of our day-to-day and year-to-year job. We, last year, and when I say that, just as a reminder, this is in 2016, we removed 338 trees. Between trimming and tree removals, the crew spent 4,800 man-hours on tree-related work. So a lot of man-hours on, on trees. The, of course, the reason that they need to be removed varied. The street improvements require the removal of some trees, of course. Trees that are pushing up curbs or raising sidewalks need to be taken care of. They, so sometimes they're removed because of those street projects or improvement projects. Trees that have significant, significant dieback or severe mushrooms or hollow trunks would also be removed, you know, for danger. If they're dying from the inside, sometimes you can't tell from the outside, and they can be a danger. Ash trees, of course, were the most prominent trees for the dieback. About 80% of our trees removed last year were, were still ash trees. The Public Works crews have removed, also removed storm-damaged trees. Of course, we had a pretty good wind here a week or two back that, that it took us, it took us a while to get those all removed and picked up. And then if there's a property owner that requests a tree that's, it's in the right-of-way, of course, we're not allowed on private property, but if it's in the right-of-way, if a property owner requests it to be removed, we, we take care of those as well. We continue to monitor, although it's getting, getting less because of the removal of the ash trees, the Emerald Ash Borer, and it's still, and a smaller issue, but it's still an issue within the city, so we still monitor that. Most of our trimming is done mainly in the winter months, so we note where those trees are in the summer and then, and then, and then trim them in the winter. We work on trimming, of course, when the weather allows, and as you know, in the, in the winter, that's not always consistent. Trimming is done in neighborhoods on a rotational basis, so that we can try to, try to cover the entire town. Records are kept to determine when areas are trimmed last, so that if anybody says, "Well, when were you gonna be to mine, or when were you in my neighborhood last?" We have those, we have records that show that. We, in a mild winter, we can trim around 2,500 trees. And then we, of course, don't start until November, and we go through mid-March on that. Well, staying with the tree theme, we, every year, participate in the, in the Arbor Day and planting trees with, with the youngsters. Each year, the city plants approximately 165 trees, and in 16, that was 17 different varieties, which, before I came here, I didn't even know there was that many varieties of trees, so that's interesting. The trees in 16, we bid that out each year, and Stacy's Nursery got that bid. And planting is done in residential and park areas, typically where trees are removed from the previous year. New developments where homes are being built, we'll also get new boulevard trees planted. A lot of times, we work with the new homeowner and, you know, find out what they want, where they want it. To, to, you know, to, to some extent, we can, we can work with them. Each year, the city participates in the local schools, with the local school, to plant trees on Arbor Day. Excuse me. This year, Mrs. Hendrickson's second-grade class from CCS, Community Christian School, assisted with planting four trees at Robins Island. And that was, I know, Ron, you were there, and it sounded like that was, that went really well. I got a picture of you up here, too, so I'll see you with the, with the kids. City of Wilmer has maintained a status of being a Tree City USA for 22 years.
Sean?
Yes?
What do we do for like, one, for... How do we take care of the trees that we plant, and who has taught us how to do that?
Well, that would be a great portion to have on my slide here, on how many licensed arborists we have on staff. I know we have a number of licensed arborists, but I don't know the, how many. And so I'm, I'm big into continuing education and getting those guys trained in, number one, in things that they want to, and then maintaining those licenses, and, and I can get you the number of arborists we have on staff, but we have the licensing and the education that, that it takes to become that type of person. I'm not, but I know who is, and so I can ask them, but there's a, there's a number of very talented guys out in a waste, in a, in a Public Works wastewater, too, but in the Public Works that, that, that have that training.
Okay. When, when I was on the campaign trail this, last year, somebody brought to my attention, they were, and I don't, I'm not a tree guy. I love trees. But they were talking about the mounting of the, of the bark and stuff around the trees, and they were talking about possibilities of it maybe leading to decay or something like that. Have you experienced that, or what? I don't, I'm not saying it's right, it's wrong. I don't know. I, I was just wondering.
And, and I don't either, and so I would, I wouldn't be able to venture a guess at the specific circumstance, but the guys at Public Works are very confident in their abilities and their up-to-date training, and, and maybe some trees you can, and some you can't. I don't know that answer either, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So beyond the trees, of course, kind of leads us down the road of the brush and compost site. As you know, we have a brush and compost site. It's out by the wastewater treatment plant. And the site's very well utilized by the citizens of the city. We average 15,000 visits per year to that site, and we have record of all that as well, numbers, anyway. Citizens can bring their grass clippings, leaves, and brush, obviously, to the site. Aged compost is also available to residents free of charge if they wish to pick some of that up as they, as it, as they leave. And a little shameless plug, we're, have overabundance of compost. If anybody's interested in getting some of that, it's, you can go out there. It's attended and it's staffed from 9:00 to 6:00 PM, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday, Wednesday, and Saturdays, so three times a week. And last year, we opened it up March 21st, and we closed it November 19th. So a good amount of the year is, it's open, and those, those services are available. Several times a week, the Public Works staff will stack the brush and leaf piles with a front-end loader to help maintain and organize the site. And the compost piles are rolled over a couple times a year to, to generate the composting process or to aid in the composting process. Staff had 220 hours working at the site last year for the brush and compost site. And the pile is ground, the brush pile, as it gets too large, is ground by a private contractor. Last year, they hauled out 9,600 cubic yards of grindings to the Fiberman, which, as you know, isn't available anymore, and so we're currently in conversations with someone else to, to help us out there. But last year, that's, it was quite a, it's kind of a neat picture. It's quite an apparatus that comes in and picks up the full-sized trees and throws them in their chipper, and it's pretty impressive. Traffic signs. So we're shifting gears here. Any questions on compost, trees, anything else?
Go ahead.
Whomever.
Thank you. Do you ever do any trimming in the summer? Some of the, I know on Richland Avenue, as you head south from my place, or east, I should say, some of the signs are obstructed by low-hanging branches and trees, and do you pay any attention to that at all in the summer? And come over and zip them off? And then one other question. If people call you and say they want a tree trim down the boulevard, it's a city tree, will they come over and do it?
Yeah. On, on your first question, that's a great point that I should have brought up. We do, that is, the, one of the exceptions we do in the, in the summer is when there's obscured signs and things of that nature, that we're always kind of on the lookout for that, and especially stop signs and things that, like that. If they're, you know, over the winter and, and the new growth, if it, if it blocks it, then we're out there. We try to take care of those fairly quickly. And I know the guys are pretty responsive to that when we get to that point. Yes, on a boulevard tree, and it doesn't happen very often, 'cause we try to pay attention to most of them, but if a resident or homeowner wants that one trimmed or taken down or whatever, then, then we'll come take a look at it and, and have a conversation with the, with the homeowner and, and figure out what's the best for the tree and for the homeowner at that point.
Okay, thanks.
I had a question on other landscaping. I know we've got some shrubbery around certain areas that are not looking so good. Is that something that's ever budgeted for to do, or is it mostly just trees that you do?
No, it's, landscaping is in the budget as well. I don't have a specific slide for the landscaping, but that's, that's all Public Works as well, and we try to take care of those. Now, some of them are privately owned, that are actually in our right-of-way, and so it would depend on which specific areas you're talking about. But there are a number of sites specifically in playgrounds and thing, or, sorry, parking lots and things that, that, that we maintain as far as that goes, as far as the landscaping goes.
Okay. So I know Spicer has a great example of their beautification committee, and I know there are people interested in doing beautification things around. Is that something they need to work with Public Works if they wanted to take on a project? Or is that something that you think we would need to, we as a council would need to set up?
Yeah, I think, I think they could work with Public Works, even, either through me or directly with Gary, and we can make that, we can make that happen or look into it, anyway. Obviously, as you know, it all always comes down to a budget, budgetary item, but, yeah, some of the towns you drive through are gorgeous everywhere you look, and so it's a matter of, and I know council's got set up some, some priority meetings set up to see what they want to do with things and budgetary items, but, but, yeah, we can definitely discuss that.
My second thing was a compliment. I know that you had the brush site open special hours after the last storm when there were a lot of things down. a lot of things down. Is that, was that new, or is that something you might consider doing again, or any comments?
My first comment was that it was not going to be open, because it was going to be open the next day. That being said, anytime our city crews are running back and forth, which they were Sunday morning for four to six hours, I think, already, I can't remember, it was open for anybody to go in there when it's, when there's already somebody there. The problem we run into, and I, I don't say that to be harsh, but the problem I run, we run into is if it's just open and nobody there, I mean, we get mattresses out there and sofas and things of that nature that, that obviously don't belong out there, and so we like to have it manned, or we like to have our guys in and out of there on a regular basis before the gates even open, and so that particular day, we had, on, on Sunday morning, we came in, the guys came in at, I think, five-thirty or six to start doing some branches and trees that have come, that had gone down, and, and worked till almost noon, I think, on, on Sunday morning, and then, and then we ended up calling somebody back to, to go man it for a few hours that afternoon, and so that was not my first choice, but, but I think it was well-used when we did have it opened up for three or four hours, and so, outside the regular hours. And, and that's the thing, we could have it open more, it would be more, more man-hours.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Want this back now? Okay, one second, if you'll pause for a second, I'll give you guys the, what I'm looking at.
Kathy has a question, too, with them.
I, I just wanted to add on to that, that I almost look at that as a snowstorm. You know, it was a storm that came through, and it was, I think people truly appreciated having the brush site open and realized that the city went outside its normal parameters, but was very appreciative, and so it was a good decision. Thank you. Hope we, hope we are reactive like that again in the future.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for the comments, and I'll, I'll definitely pass that along, because I know, I know the, the guy we, we ran out there, asked to go out there, was, was fine doing it, and, and I think it went real well, so appreciate that, thank you. You want to just follow along, or you want me to have the? Okay. Traffic signs. Traffic signs along the city streets and paths are maintained, are also maintained by the, by the Public Works. Most sign damage, of course, comes from traffic accidents. The, when we work directly with the police department, and the traffic reports, and some of them get, get paid by the, the person that was the culprit in the, in the accident. Last year, the department repaired or installed ninety-eight signs. The department spent four-hundred-and-forty hours with repairs, installation, and inventory of those signs. We're currently under, some of you may remember, a twelve-year plan to upgrade all traffic signs on a, on a rotating basis to meet the new, and, and pay attention to this word, retro-reflectivity standards, that were put in place in 2013. We continue to work on that project as well. So building maintenance and concrete work, just yet another, another bag of tricks that our guys can do and handle and, and do it great. We maintain several shelters and buildings, of course, around the parks and, and, and city buildings. We have a vast range of skilled personnel able to perform most repairs of the city-owned buildings. Staff installed two new batting cages last year, one at Orange and one at Wilmer Senior High School, and we also take care of all the other repairs that come forward on a daily basis. Public Works crew repairs and replaces different concrete needs, anything from sidewalks that are, that are hazard, trip hazard, to curbing and things of that nature, that aren't, that aren't a larger project that, that makes more sense to, to contract out. We repaired some of the catch basins last year that failed, and we raised and lowered manholes as needed. We installed concrete pad for bleachers of Bluefield, and a sidewalk at the airport was replaced, and last year, we had fourteen different project sites for, that our guys did concrete. And the one that's in the picture wasn't even mentioned, that's the, not concrete, but the new decking, deck at the, at the Civic Center that was back in the southeast corner. Okay, sanitary and storm sewers. City of Wilmer has over a hundred miles of sanitary lines, sanitary sewer lines, each spring and fall, those lines are jetted and cleaned, and as a preventative maintenance issue, or, or measure, I think the, the league or insurance company, or insurance with the league requires every two to three years, we just had this, I can't remember, Judy, but anyway, we do it about once a year to, to jet those lines, or every other year at the, at the latest, I believe. We assist wastewater staff with cleaning of the lift stations on, on an as-needed basis. Last year, we had almost eleven, almost eleven-hundred-and-forty hours of working on sanitary sewers for 2016. Storm sewers, of course, are also maintained. Staff cleans the catch basins after rainfalls, and the Public Works, along with our engineering staff, work in conjunction to inspect and clean the, the stormwater outfalls. Street sweeper also plays a big part in this, they're running daily, and streets sweeps the streets free of debris daily when the weather allows, which allows to keep the catch basin grates open. Nine-hundred-and-fifty-five hours were spent on storm sewers in 2016. August 11th, as we talked about already, was hit, that's the ten-inch rainfall we had, and I know, depending on where you were, it was anywhere from eight or nine to twelve or thirteen, so we picked a nice even number of ten, causing serious flooding of streets and parks. Staff worked around the clock, starting the night of the 10th, to, to block barricades, blocking barricade streets. I think it says "clock" to barricade streets. Oh, around the clock. To assist the wastewater with pumping of the lift stations. Sanitary sewer was overcome by amount of water, caused many homes to have sewer backup. Staff tallied over two-hundred hours of working on that, that individual rain event. Here's a couple pictures from that rain event. The top one is Baker Field, actually, I believe, that must be looking from the north. Can't tell for sure. And then the back one, the bottom one, I can't tell which street that is, but pick a name, because there are a few of them that look like that, so. Which brings us to mosquitoes and weed control. We have five employees certified, this answers your question on this one, I should have had this on the trees, Councilman Alvarado, but we have five employees that are certified with State of Minnesota, Department of Ag, for, as applicators. Requires employees to attend annual seminars related to the pesticide management. We go out each spring and monitor larvicide stormwater ponds as needed for the mosquito control. During the season, a staff person goes to different locations to physically count the mosquitoes and, and survey the amount of the adult mosquitoes that they see, and determine, and then help determine if it's necessary to spray for those, spray for those mosquitoes. 2016, we applied what we call adulticide six times, and that does not include, include the two specific Robins Island events that we sprayed in 16. Since '03, the average number of times that we applied the adulticide in the city's been six per year, at the cost of almost twenty-thousand dollars on, a year for just the product. We have one employee takes care of all the weed control in the city, a city-owned property. Will start early in the summer mornings to spray medians in park areas before the traffic and pedestrians get out, and we follow up and take care of the citizen complaints on a, on a daily basis. I think I got a slide, I don't know if you can see this slide or not. Yeah, you can. So, this slide here indicates from '03 to 16, the amount of times we applied both larvicide and adulticide, and the cost in just product, and that's a total cost for each of those So you can see it ranges from one in 15 to six in 16, and so, back to a question earlier, Councilmember Nelson, that, you know, it's just kind of random, it doesn't seem like it, it follows any patterns either.
Excuse me, Sean, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
It's going to seem like a bizarre question, but I read an article just this last week in a, in a turf magazine, so I'm going to ask you. Regarding the mosquito spray, I know residents always appreciate it, is it safe?
Short answer, yes. The, the chemicals we use for the mosquitoes are, have shown to not be generally harmful to, to humans and to adults and, and youth. There are some concerns by, by members of the public, and I know what we've done in the past, if, if someone calls and concerned and said, "I don't want you to spray near my house," when I say in the past, this is a former job, we would actually shut the sprayer off at their house, but I don't know that that's been practice or policy here, but we've not heard, I don't think we've had any complaint or any claims of sicknesses from the, from the mosquito spray. The other thing is, we, we do it at hours, I, I hear them at ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night, so most people are inside already, and we do let people know ahead of time, and so if they're concerned about it, or you don't like the smell or the noise of the machine, just to remind people to shut their windows if they, if they prefer, and I don't know, to be, to be honest, to be honest with you, but I don't, I don't think it, I don't think there's a health risk with it. We're, we're not being told there is, anyway.
Couple times I've been sitting on my porch when the trucks come by, and then, this probably for years, and then I read that article, and then I wondered to myself, I wondered if that was a smart idea or not, but...
It's a, it's a different smell, the fogging is, and, and, I don't know, I, I think most people, when, if they smell it and hear it, they're kind of glad, because the mosquitoes are going to go away, so we haven't had a whole lot of complaints about that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We did have complaints a couple years ago, because you didn't spray, and we hadn't gotten the permit in time or something, and had to wait, so it was, they about carried us away, so reverse, I would say, applies, too.
Right, and I can't remember if I was here for that or not, but I remember some conversations about that, too, so, yeah, and that could be the, the reason there's some of those years, that there's one, because they were bad early, and then they, for whatever reason, died off, and...
Sean, are we renting or leasing that machine to any other cities, too? I know we used to years ago.
Lease it to other cities?
Yeah.
I don't, I know we haven't recently, but I don't, I don't see why we couldn't, if, you know, if that request came up, I, I think we could, I think we work pretty well with some of the neighboring cities if, if that request came. How am I doing on time? Good? Have I killed my hour and a half yet?
There is one property in my neighborhood that they don't spray yet.
Okay, okay, so we do that here, then? Good, good. Okay, just shut me off whenever you guys are done, or whenever you want to move on to something else. I got more. All right, so painting. City crews do, we do all the painting. Some of the larger projects, if you saw the trucks in town here a few weeks ago, we hired that out, but street markings, arrows, stop bars, crosswalk blocks, railroad crossings, those are all city, or Public Works. Total number of markings last year was approximately thirteen-hundred, I'm sorry, each year, because those, we don't increase those very often until you have increased streets. It does not include the yellow curb, share the road, bike markings, or the centerline striping, that's, that's all separate, is from those thirteen-hundred. Traffic marking is put on, put out by, for quotes each year, and, and is completed on or near June 15th, and that's what you saw when you saw the trucks out here, here a few weeks ago. Cost of the striping in fourteen, in 2016 was just over fourteen-thousand dollars, and as far as painting goes, we also paint the picnic tables, the thin ice signs each winter to get them repaired for use. Each, each year, crews will paint one or two of the shelters, just as general maintenance, park shelters. As for maintenance, we also help out with, with the airport, the snow removal needs, needs. One staff member is dedicated to the snow removal at the airport, consists of plowing all the surfaces, also cleaning around the runway and taxiway lights, and the equipment they use out there, is a loader with a plow and a wing, or a snow blower to widen those if we get an excess amount of snow in a, in a given year. Public Works also helps out a variety of ways to fill maintenance needs at the airport and the grounds, and we help out the FBO and the manager out there, and we've got a good relationship with them. Last year, we had one-hundred-and-fifty-seven hours working at the airport. Summer activities, 2016 was, was a big year for parks. We, if you'll recall, we replaced equipment at six different parks. New play units went in at Minnagasco. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself here. They're installed by Minnesota Playground Company at Ramblewood, Cardinal, Gesh, College View, Minnagasco, and Haden Parks. Staff also install the play surfaces at, at each of these locations, and that would be the, the wood chips, or whatever the, the fall protection is at those, at those playgrounds. We perform the day-to-day maintenance on the shelters and the playground areas and the parks. During the summer, staff prepared all the ball diamonds and fields for six-hundred-and-fifty-eight games or events. We prepare the fields and diamonds consist of grooming the infield surfaces and marking the various lines and the boundaries. Baker Diamond is where the Stingers play, and there's thirty-five home games there that we, that are, so that field is prepared for each of those home games. Involves a lot of extra attention to that specific complex for that, for that group. Showmobile is set up and taken down by the Public Works, we did that twenty-seven times in 2016, so it gets, is well-used. Mowing and trimming, of course, is a daily, big part of the deal. Staff mows with four to five mowers a day, and all, all summer, approximately three-hundred acres of, of area that they, that they mow. Staff had four-five-hundred hours of mowing for 2016, and that's almost exclusively seasonal staff. The Dorothy Olson Aquatic Center, we also, the Public Works also maintains that, it has four, we have four certified pool operators, or we did in 16, I don't remember if we lost one of those in retirement or not, but each day, a staff member performs all maintenance needs at the pool, and that's seven days a week. In 2016, we had eight-hundred-and-five hours spent at the pool for maintenance purposes. So this picture is a little dated, but it nonetheless is, is a, is an annual process that we do for the winter activities. We take care of the, we take care of four ice rinks and two hockey rinks, the different locations around the city. It includes flooding and cleaning the rinks, and the setup and takes down, takedown of all the hockey boards at the multiple sites. Public Works is also responsible for the operation and maintenance of two aeration systems, one in Wilmer Avenue and one in, or Wilmer Lake, and one in Foot Lake. During the winter months, we repair and maintain all the park equipment, play equipment, and repair and paint all park picnic tables, and tree trimming, of course, as I mentioned earlier, takes place during the year, during the winter. Snow removal on all the paths and walks is a big part of duties, and this, as this picture indicates, I didn't have it in this paragraph, but that is drilling the holes for the thin ice signs that are around, around the aerators. Event preparation. Last year, the Public Works Department did a lot of events for the civic groups. We supply barricades, bleachers, tables, and other manpower as needed for the different civic groups and the prep process. The Showmobile, as I mentioned earlier, is used for a lot of those events, like the Rice Park Band Concerts, which this year has moved to Robins because of the construction of Rice Park. Wilmer Fest, County Fair, Holidays Parade, Celebrate Arts, each of those requires setup and takedown of that, of that Showmobile, and other bleachers and tables and benches as, as needed. Each, each event may require different level surface, service from the department. New for 2016 were the two free band concerts at Robins Island, I think they called them Rockin' Robins, sponsored by the Rotary Clubs, so the, and, and also the Traveling Vietnam Wall was displayed out at Robins Island, and the Public Works crew set that up and the pathways and, and things associated with that. And then Genial Foods celebrated their seventy-fifth anniversary at Robins Island, and we were involved in the setup and cleanup, cleanup of that process, of those events. Mechanic shop, here's some numbers, some more numbers for you. We have two mechanics, and they maintain and repair all of the fleet, Public Works fleet, including the heavy equipment, front-end loaders, graders, light, and all the way down to light equipment, lawn mowers and chainsaws. Garage also does maintenance and repairs for the police department, fire department, and all of the pool cars. The, the mechanics are pretty amazing in the, the variety and fulfill the repairs and maintenance of all the different types of equipment, and total fleet is about one-hundred-and-seventy-five units, so they, they got their hands full on a daily basis. And you got one of your new cars up there, Jim?
I noticed that.
Yeah. I'm sure it was just an oil change, yeah. So under miscellaneous, must mean I'm getting close to the end here, the Public Works Department gets involved in many different types, as you can see, of jobs on a day-to-day basis. There is no shortage of things to do, nor, I don't think anybody is, is bored out there. I think there's a plenty of different, different things going on at any given time. We assist the Civic Center staff with ice removal in both rinks. Civic Center staff with ice removal on both rinks, Cardinal and the Blue Line Arena. We assist the other, we assist the Civic Center with other tasks as they need and have a very good working relationship with Rob and his crew up there. We assist the police and fire, community ed, wastewater municipal utilities with jobs that come up and require additional manpower or the expertise that Public Works has. We also assist the city clerk on annually, or at least every two years, with setup and tear-down on election equipment and things that are needed as far as hauling and tearing down and setting up. Other departments have requests for help of areas of concrete installation, construction projects. The department is always willing to jump in and help out with that. We did all repairs and maintenance, it says the Public Works Department did the repairs and maintenance on the city fire hydrants. And we do, some of those we do and some of those we contract out. The city has around 2,200 fire hydrants. Repairs could come from the results of car accidents or normal wearing out of that equipment. Department will go to every hydrant and winterize each one prior to the winter. Some of those require drain down, some of those so they don't freeze up. We worked 440 hours on hydrants last year in 2016. Department has a wide range of skills available. Some of the skills are masonry, carpentry, plumbing, electrical, mechanical. It's a great staff, talented group, and I put in there very high standards. And that's all I got. Any questions on any of that? It was pretty quick. I don't think I spent my hour, so.
Fernando?
Well, compliments to you and your staff. I heard good things about the flag coming in, on the bypass, coming into town. People like to see that. They like to see the seasonal displays that we put up. I find your staff, when I approach them out on the street as a citizen, very friendly, try to be accommodating, and that speaks highly of you and your group because it starts at the top.
Thank you.
So, I appreciate that. So, hats off to them.
Thank you. And I would encourage anyone that they see them, you know, give a wave. They're a great group of guys. Thank you. And gals this year, I'm sorry.
Well done, and thank you.
Yes.
I had a couple residents that we're talking about, they are avid walkers. And as they walk, they collect garbage. And they had concerns, I don't know if this falls under your hat or if it's a Brizendine thing, but do we have adequate garbage receptacles around the city and our parks and along the streets? Because they come home with bags of garbage and then they put it in their own trash and they feel like they're supplementing the city.
You know, most of those, a lot of those garbage cans and receptacles are seasonal because of the higher use of the parks in the summer. We bring out more cans in the summer. Unfortunately, all the cans in the world aren't going to prevent all the trash. That's unfortunate. But, yeah, we get calls occasionally on, can you add a can here, you know, in different locations? And sometimes we've done that or relocated some cans in a couple places. Sometimes it's simple enough to, concept that it actually works. I feel like we do have enough, but we're always open to potential other areas that may need to be serviced by some of those trash cans. I know we pay on a delivery basis, we pay on a per-can basis in the summer. And so, and that's bid out each year as well. But I'm always open to additional ideas or thoughts or locations that might need them. You know, what I get most frustrated with is when there's trash next to an empty trash can or a not-full trash can, I should say. So, that's frustrating and unfortunately, not much you can do about that, about all of it.
Right. And so, I do my due diligence. I probably know how you're going to answer the question, but have we dabbled with any recycling bins in those same areas?
You know, I think we have in the past. With the county recycling being fairly centrally located, I mean, I know it's closer to the west end of town, but it's pretty good access to it. The problem with that is, then we have to hire someone to go pick them up because it's, they don't have the, or set them out, I should say. I know that, I know that there was a couple trailers around for a while that had some recycling associated with it. I can look into that and see if the county has any of those trailers, but I know the delivery or the guys that go around to the neighborhoods to get them, you have to set them out by the curb each, you know, once a week or every other week, I think it is. And so, we probably haven't done as much as we can with the recycling. And we could do that if the receptacles would stay. But we can look into that, some of those options.
Thanks.
It would be nice to see that. I think the county has put together some sort of combination of collection for the different types of recycling. And I think some of the other communities are using that also. So, it might be good for us to pick up the pace on how we can do recycling and what it might mean for who does the collections of that.
You know, I know, I can't remember if it's once or twice a year, that I thought we had a combined effort with the county where we'd have one single site. And it seemed like it was at Public Works or whatever, that people could bring all their stuff on one day or a couple of days in some of those recycle efforts. So, yeah, we can look into that and see if there's other options available.
Other questions?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. I understand the pool is going to need a new floor. Is that something Public Works does, or do you hire that out?
That one we'll probably hire out. It's kind of specialized because of the way it's flaking and age-related. So, we'll probably hire that one out, would be my assumption at this point. I haven't seen the details yet or specs on that to see what it is.
Do you know what that's going to cost?
You know, I don't. I think Steve Brizendine, I think, has those numbers. Of course, he's not here tonight, but I can get those to you. I can't remember off the top of my head. It might be in the CIP process currently.
Okay. And then a suggestion. It would be nice, this information you've given us, it would be nice to have it at a council meeting so the public can see all what you people do at Public Works. I mean, you do a lot of stuff. And I appreciate all the numbers every year, from trees, the sidewalks, the repairing streets and that. The public needs to know this. And I know that they're not going to put it all in the newspaper, but it would be interesting. And then, will we get a copy of this report?
Absolutely, you can if you would like.
Yeah, I would like one on my computer, yeah. Thank you again.
I can actually put it on that centralized location where your other policies and procedures or whatever, if you would, there's probably an area there.
Or just in a Dropbox.
I can do that too.
Yeah. Thank you again.
I was going to ask you to put it on the city website and also to make sure that it's posted on social media. Because I think there are a lot of people who would appreciate the information. And I think it also helps when it comes to a budgeting standpoint for people to understand costs and actual numbers of information. And so, in addition to getting it out to all of us, I would hope that you would find a place for it on the website and social media.
I can do that. I would, I may want to go through it. There, I saw a couple, as I was going through it each time, a couple of the typos that I want to clean up a little bit, but yeah.
That's fine. I think Ron has another question.
Sure, yeah. Thank you. A year and a half, maybe two years ago, Scott Lederberger suggested to me that we should close four parks. I don't have them on the top of my head, but are we going anywhere with that?
You know, I think at this point, I would defer back to council and their priorities when we get to that, you know, when you guys get to talking about that.
Sure.
And, you know, I, my understanding was that there's, that that conversation was that there are four lesser-used parks. As far as recommending to close them, that's a little difficult to stand here and do. But, you know, when we get to the conversation of the priorities, I think that could be a topic of conversation.
Sure. Thank you.
Kathy?
I would just like to say thank you for that clarification because I've understood that that statement has been taken out of context. And so, I think that's important, that this whole council understands the situation which the question was asked and answered.
I'd just follow up further with that because I go to the Community Ed and Rec Advisory Board. Those questions were answered. The Advisory Board has looked, and I think if you go back and read the minutes from within the last two or three months, we did address that and talked about that with that. And I think the plan is to review all the parks and to look at, you know, to look at each one. And I think some of the names that were given for those parks certainly are parks that are being utilized. And we did have that conversation at Community Ed and Rec. So, and I know it was documented in the minutes. Excuse me, Rick, go ahead.
Thank you. On the painting of fire hydrants, that's not your summer help, that's the fire department's job, right?
Correct. Fire's been doing that for a number of years. And it's, you know, time and budget-related. As they get a chance to do that, they've had summer help over the past couple of years, but I don't think you do this year. And so, it's Frank out there painting them this year, so.
Yeah, I noticed there's a few green and yellow ones out there.
Where, he's, yeah. I think he's been doing a great job of getting those red as we can. Of course, all the new ones are red, but the old ones are getting work as we can get to it. Or he can get to it, rather.
Anybody else? Questions? No? Sean, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You did an excellent job, so thank you. All right. I don't know that we have anything else that we need to address, so I think we will close for now and be back at 7:00. So, thank you very much.